I love that. Um, it's called the meeting to order. We just returned from an executive session and now going to roll call and then to appearances.
Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zaro.
Here.
Councilmember Joel Wachs.
Here.
Councilmember Jane Brahm.
Here.
Councilmember, who are we missing? No, Mayor Bruce Bassett and Deputy Mayor Dan Grous.
Here. So we will go right to appearances. The rules haven't changed even though different person is sitting here with a gavel. Three minutes on any subject you'd like to speak on. We have general rules which apply, but as the mayor always says, basically comes down to be nice and be respectful and anyone who'd like to speak, go for it. Leon.
My name's Leon Cohen. I have a partnership called 2411 Limited Partnership and we're the owner of the 2411 76th Avenue Southeast where Freshies Market is. And I've been on the island about 15 years. We came for parks and schools and our kids went through the Mercer Island School District and played in the band and sports and went to the Parade of Roses and all of that. 2007, we purchased a lot, the lot, and we started planning with the city to construct a lot, a project that was just on the lot itself in the beginning. And I had meetings with more than 15 people from the different departments. I have like 20 files at home, this is just a smidgen of it. And we met with development, with construction permit applications we have here. Over the past eight years, I've made a matrix of conversations with staff and people that you normally would talk to and to keep an idea where the process is, try to. In 2008, I hired McGrannam Architects to do a Plan A, which is on the property subject, and then Plan B, which is to take, to look into the property to the north, which was owned by Washdot at the time. And then I was instrumental in finding the deed to trust and legal description for the leftover I-90 property. And then that's property that goes to the corner. And I gave this to the city manager and he requested to Washdot the property be available to the city of Mercer Island. I received questions from lots of government agencies and people and soon thereafter, Rich received approval from Peter Alm from Washdot and later he received the 4H not necessary so that the property was free to deal with. In the past eight years, I've submitted seven different schemes to the city, to the council, to some of the staff. And I won't show, I won't take the time to show them all, but there's seven different proposals here. And they include like, to start with, a 37 unit with retail and parking. Another one was a 47 unit parking for youth theater northwest. It also included theater and stage space for their move and I was, worked with them with both their boards to come up with a floor plan and spent considerable amount of money with space planning and that and so forth. Then another one was a retail parking and amphitheater, was a three-story. Another project was, proposal was a transit-oriented development with retail office and parking.
Leon, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up if you can.
Yeah, I just got a little bit more. Almost there. Am I polite? I hope. I'll get there. So there was another four-story parking structure, but my main, I'll skip to the end, and my main reason for coming in is I feel that regarding the moratorium at hand, if the Heinz project is exempt from the moratorium, I think 2411 should also be exempt. We have over 1.2 million invested in the property with architects, engineers, traffic studies, soils reports, removal of three large gas tanks and meeting with the city in submittals. And a potential down zone would cause unnecessary hardship and given historical circumstances, it would be unfair to exempt one and not the other. So I ask if you would please consider exempting them. Thank you for your time and good evening.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Dick Winslow, 3761 77th Ave Southeast. I'm urging you tonight to have a better process to obtain input from residents, Mercer Island residents, before major plans are approved or allowed. Three weeks ago at this meeting, the next-to-last speaker noted that Mercer Islanders seem kind of quiet and accepting until the very last, then arise an outrage over something you're doing. Though that speaker opposed the moratorium and I favored it, he was right. Most of us ordinary Mercer Islanders are oblivious to what's being planned or proposed until often by a chance conversation or talking with a friend or neighbor or seeing a headline or something online, we learn about it. Exceptions are rare, such as a small number of good people on the library issue, Tom Acker on the Save Our Suburbs issues, and Ira Appleman on just about everything. Most of us are busy going to work, raising our children and grandchildren, and trying to chop the invasive ivy out of our backyards. So if we learn belatedly about something important to the island, there is an uproar, often culminating in mass appearances before you all. I have my own strong opinion about the so-called vibrant town center, and I might talk about this at next week's meeting. But my point is that I have my personal opinion. I can't tell you what most Mercer Islanders think or feel because I talk regularly only to my friends and neighbors. And to speak directly, I believe that you too get only a limited picture of what most Mercer Islanders want because your public input methods are inadequate. In short, for major matters which affect lots of Islanders, use something like the model you used last year wonderfully, I think, with the water contamination problem. Signs were put up all over the island announcing the problem and within 24 hours, most of us knew about it. Or the signs by the park and rides about re-establishing some kind of commuter service. These simple techniques, these signs, these sandwich boards, are used all the time by local businesses, sports teams, arts events, garage and estate sales, and so on and so forth. Do something like that on a regular basis, whatever you choose, and you'll accomplish two things. First, you'll get plenty of citizen input well in advance. And second, you're less likely to have droves of us coming to your meetings at the last minute emotionally protesting what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Anybody else? If people would like to get in line already, it'll just save everyone a lot of time. Tom?
Good evening. Just a few big picture observations before I-
Name and address, please, just for the record.
Tom, I'm Rick, 6231 Island Crest Way. Can I get those three seconds back? Just a few big picture observations before I start my usual list. The first is that I think you're really missing the fact that there are finite limits to growth and that we're gonna have serious consequences if we don't understand that. Second, we're placing a huge amount of, falsely placing a huge amount of trust in this inefficient concept of heavily subsidized mass transit that's not gonna work now or ever, and we have to rethink that whole issue. You're failing to see that we're moving toward a critical time where intelligent vehicles are gonna have to be preserving our right of way and not giving up parking and traffic and those elements of moving people because they're the only ones that are gonna work. So I'd suggest that you seriously consider realigning your priorities to closely match those big picture issues and then at least try to take into consideration a broader segment of Islander views to do, take the following steps. First, this proposed town center liaison group including three city council members, three planning commissioners, three design commissioners, it's completely unacceptable. It doesn't represent our broader community at all. Second, we have to extend the north end development moratorium to at least six months with no exceptions allowed. Third, we need to update the Mercer Island-wide zoning to reflect our current esprit density. We're gonna have a mess island-wide, not just in the north end. Fourth, we don't, we can't base any of these zoning provisions on this 1994 town center plan. A simple observation on the north end of our island and the businesses that were driving up the island shows clearly that that vision was wrong and ineffective and it's not gonna work. And finally, we have to identify the true community stakeholders because multinational corporations are not community stakeholders, whereas our citizen taxpayers in the school district who have to recover fully allocated costs are the real stakeholders in this and they need to be more substantially represented. Finally, as evidenced by this recent inappropriate traffic level of service decision, as far as I'm concerned, the credibility of the city's planning staff, planning commission, design commission are essentially zero. So rather than just allowing for the import of a few citizen sessions, we need to actually reboot our processes, the failed city planning commission and the design commission and to start with a zoning that got us to this failed miserable point in the starting place. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening. My name's Stacy Dimick. I live at 3230 80th Avenue Southeast on Mercer Island. Sometime in 2013, a concept for a major new construction project was brought forward to be located within two parcels, including one that is called the King property. We'll call this the 2013 Heinz project. Town Center Code Section 19 requires an applicant to attend a pre-design meeting. And Section 19 also provides for an optional study session with the design committee. So as required, agents of the 2013 Heinz project attended a pre-design meeting with the Development Services Group staff around October 15, 2013, where they presented schematic sketches outlining a mixed-use project. Then they requested a study session with the design commission that was scheduled for November 13, 2013. And at that study session, the 2013 Heinz project was presented and the design commission provided feedback on the project regarding a number of changes, including parking requirements, public amenities, the interior courtyard, and the location of the public plaza. Sometime in 2014, a concept for a major new construction project encompassing three parcels, including the King property, was presented to the city and we'll call this the 2014 Heinz project. The agents of the 2014 Heinz project scheduled design commission's study session for December 10, 2014. And at this study session, a different concept was presented that included 60 to 70 more residential units, over 5,000 square feet of additional commercial space, and around 200 more parking stalls. It has been calculated that the concept presented at this session did not include or allow sufficient space to add a grocery store, nor did it include the allowed space to add 200 parking stalls. This December 10, 2014, design commission study session was the last action of record taken by Heinz in its Mercer Island application process. The 2014 Heinz project is not vested under the applicable Washington state law. On February 2, 2015, the city council adopted a moratorium which excluded, thus granting vesting rights, to the 2014 Heinz project. The moratorium specifically calls out and focuses on a single project. This allows that project, which is a dominant piece in the middle-town center, to be exempt from the enforcement of any new revisions that are about to be made to Mercer Island's development code. So to hear the council say that they think an important decision can be made on the premise to someone promise, that promises to be nice, but they might sue us, that concerns me.
Stacy, I have to ask you to wrap it up.
Right at the end. Seems to me that decisions such as this should rather be based on Washington state law. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Three minutes. Jeez, okay. Hi, I'm Cynthia Oweniski. I sent you an email last Thursday about our findings of fact, and I'd be happy to talk to anybody about that. And I just wanted to say that I'm here not as representative of SOS, represent just a few of us that put this together, although I do support SOS. I think they have some very important points that should be listened to. Now, I want you to understand, I'm not here, oh, wait. See? I got 10 more seconds. All right. These comments are not intended to be a personal attack on anyone. These comments are just factual summaries of information available to the public. Vested rights are established by the Washington State vested rights statutes and Washington State Supreme Court opinions applying those Washington State vested rights statutes. The Washington State vested rights statutes and the Washington State Supreme Court opinions mandate when a development product, uh, project is event, sorry, when a development project is exempt from the application of new land use laws and when a development project is not exempt. On February 1, 2015, each council member was provided a memorandum that objectively addressed and explained the Washington State vested rights statutes and the Washington State Supreme Court opinions applying to those vested rights statutes. The Heinz project as a matter of law is not vested and has no vested rights. At this February 2, 2015 council meeting, City Attorney Knight did not mention the Washington State vested rights statutes and the Supreme Court opinions applying to those. At the February 2, 2015 meeting, City Attorney Knight did not disclose that the Heinz project as a matter of law is not vested and has no vested rights. At the February 2 meeting also, City Attorney Knight appeared to ignore the mandate of the Washington State moratorium statutes that legal moratorium must be based upon, justified by facts, not conclusions or speculation, such as those based upon the moratorium that was adapted by Mercer Island on February 2. At the February 2 meeting, City Attorney Knight appeared to nurture the premise that Heinz will sue Mercer Island if the city council does not exclude Heinz from the proposed So also at that meeting, City Knight, City Attorney Knight inaccurately represented to the citizens of Mercer Island and to the city council that the Heinz project was on the cusp of submitting and building. Despite the fact that at the February 2 city council meeting, City Attorney Knight, one, did not mention the Washington State vested rights statutes or the Washington State Supreme Court opinions applying these statutes, and two, did not disclose the Heinz project as a matter of law is not vested. The city council was provided a full legal analysis on moratorium issues prior on deciding the moratorium, is what she told the public. Thank you.
I will just point out for the record that there was no one on this council who believed that the Heinz project was vested and that our city attorney was withholding any information in that respect.
So I don't get to talk anymore, do I?
I'm just, no, you don't.
Oh, okay.
So I just, because you've suggested that our city attorney withheld information and didn't tell us that the project had vested and, or that the project had or had not vested. And I can assure you that the city attorney made it very clear to us that, and I think everyone in this council knows, that the project had not vested under Washington law.
Oh, well, then that confuses me.
Evan?
Hi, my name's Evan Casaguma. I work for Heinz and we're proposing the projects at 29th and 78th. And I'm just here today to notify the public and invite the public to attend our open house, which we're hosting on Thursday at 5:30 in the Culkin's Room at the community center. And we hope to have the opportunity to gather input, gather feedback, and hear the community's thoughts on all the issues that are facing the town center and also the opportunities that we see with our project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Matt Weniski. I live at 2750 68th Avenue Southeast. These comments are not intended to be personal attack on anyone. These comments are factual summaries of information available to the public. I understand Deputy Mayor Grous is a member of the Washington State Bar Association. On February 1, 2015, each council member was provided a memorandum that objectively addressed and explained the Washington State vested rights statutes and Washington State Supreme Court opinions. The Heinz project as a matter of law is not vested and has no vesting rights. At the February 2, 2015 city council meeting, Deputy Mayor Grous did not mention the Washington State vested rights statutes and Washington State Supreme Court opinions applying those Washington State vested rights statutes. At the February 2, 2015 city council meeting, Deputy Mayor Grous did not disclose that the Heinz project as a matter of law is not vested and has no vested rights. Deputy Mayor Grous continually nurtures the incorrect premise that Heinz will sue Mercer Island if the city council does not exclude the Heinz project from any moratorium adopted by Mercer Island. Deputy Mayor Grous continuously ignores the fact that Heinz's January 30, 2015 letter to the city manager is legally irrelevant to the Washington State vested rights statutes and the Washington State Supreme Court opinions applying those Washington State vested rights statutes. Deputy Mayor Grous continuously ignores the fact that the letter from Whole Foods to Heinz and read to the city council on February 6, February 2, 2015, is legally irrelevant to Washington State vested rights statutes and the Washington State Supreme Court's opinion applying those Washington State vested rights statutes. Deputy Mayor Grous continuously ignores the fact that whether or not a Whole Foods or any other grocery store will be located in the Heinz project is legally irrelevant to the Washington State vested rights statutes and the Washington State Supreme Court opinions applying those Washington State vested rights statutes. At the February 2, 2015 city council meeting, Deputy Mayor Grous appeared to ignore the mandate of the Washington State moratorium statutes that legally, that legal moratorium must be based on justified, must be based upon and justified by facts, not conclusions or speculations such as those which the moratorium adopted by the city of Mercer Island on February 2, 2015 is in large part based. Thank you.
While you might think I would be inclined to defend myself, my comments previously regarding Katie was that I will defend what our staff does and I will defend our staff when they're accused. I will not pretend to respond to what you just said, even though it's directed at me personally.
Curtis Brown, 7015 80th Avenue Southeast. So our meeting a month ago bothered me in a few ways. The comment was made then, and I've read it in emails as well, that much of what the council is hearing, I should say the broader council, is emotion-based and where, confuses the data and the facts and we don't have the real story in front of us. And the implication is that if we had the same data you had, there's no way we could come to a different conclusion regarding density. And that comes across a little superior. It's also incorrect. I think we need to start looking at the Growth Management Act as it comes across to Mercer Island. And I don't think we've talked a lot about that in the past and as, at the council level and also in the, in the crowd here. But it, you know, I feel like we're missing opportunities to push back with respect to the Growth Management Act, partly just because I don't hear about, I don't hear about any, any attempts along those lines. And that may be incorrect. I doubt it. I've just started to look into this. Other towns and counties have pushed back in the past. Yes, some of them have not been successful, but some of them have made inroads. And the ones that come to mind are up in Island County because they're an island. And I feel like we could gain some of the same traction along those points. Also, we're one of the more dense cities in the area, at least on the east side. So, you know, I would like to see us become better informed and, and on the Growth Management Act, I'd like to see us become more of an expert along those lines. I'd like to see us develop some, you know, be talking to those people that are putting this out and, and start pushing back, okay, so that we don't have this, this debate that we're having right now. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Curtis. Ira?
Hey, Dan. Ira Appleman, 4436 Ferncroft Road. I object to the favoritism given to the development special interests last meeting by exempting the King Heinz project from so-called moratorium. And I object to the favoritism given to development special interests this meeting in the way the committees are set up to change the town center guidelines as development special interest desire. There are at least two reasons why a moratorium should be in place that doesn't exempt the King Heinz project. In separate emails to the city council last night and earlier today, I provided detailed information on these two points, which I incorporate by reference in these comments. First, the system of amenities for increased building height is broken. We haven't received any significant amenities for all the development that's happened down there, so in the town center so far. At the 7800 Plaza condominiums, the developer provided a dinky fountain that you can hardly see unless you're standing next to it. In exchange for the dinky fountain, the developer grossed $9.7 million for 16 condos on floors 3, 4, and 5. Island Market Square built to five stories for the valuable amenities of three parking garage entrances and an entrance to a Realtor. We need to fix the amenities, town center guidelines, before we get another worthless impervious plaza amenity for the King Heinz project. In 2005, Commissioner Chair Glick addressed the city council on the need for mid-block connections, and one very important mid-block, mid-block connection is on the north portion of the Heinz-King project between 78th and 77th. The council didn't do anything about that, and if they continue to do nothing about that, we won't have that mid-block connection. The special interests that control this council that resulted in the exemption of the King Heinz project from the so-called moratorium is also controlling how the committee process is being conducted to make sure special interests get what they want in this public engagement process. What we're doing is a repeat of past mistakes where the city sets up stakeholder committees and, and uses the design commissioner, the planning commissioner, the council to emcee the whole thing. What the city means by stakeholders is what normally we would call special interests. If this is such a great process, how did the developer at 7800 Plaza get so much value, almost $10 million of value, for a dinky fountain? I think it's telling that this, in this public engagement process- I think it's telling that this, in this public engagement process is being adopted tonight, is being adopted without any public engagement. There's been no attempt to get any public input on, on how the public should be engaged for this town center plan.
Hello. I was only going to talk about one thing, but before that clock starts ticking, there's not going to be a redo for Heinz tonight, is there?
No.
Oh, because last time, remember, they got to come back after all the public comments, and I just want to make sure. And that, that's a sore subject with me, because I, I got engaged in this about three and a half months ago after a litany of events, got so many of my friends and colleagues on the island frustrated and upset that it, it just didn't feel right. And after the last council meeting, I was supremely disappointed at not only how the meeting was run, but also by the special allowances made to Heinz. And, and I'm going to leave it at that, I'm moving on, but I will tell you that I'm not going to sell my values, my integrity, or my community out for a Trojan horse, Whole Foods. I like Whole Foods, it's eight minutes away, I can drive there. But Heinz does not represent our interests, and I, I didn't really know they were doing the, the Public Relations Campaign next week, and people have asked me about it, and I said, "Go if you want," but I'm not really going to push it, nor did I ask folks to come to this meeting, it was, we're going to focus on the next one. But I can read the tea leaves, Leon gave his speech, and some of the community members here, it's a disaster what's been created with the Heinz exemption. You gave special privileges to an outside entity and foregone other developers like the Cassans and Leon and other people who can demonstrate that they've been working with the city even longer. That is not right. I strongly encourage you to get an external legal opinion again, and also reconsider exempting Heinz. Now, having said that, I'm going to move forward. I'm putting it all behind, and I'm going to trust that everybody here is going to move forward in good faith. And so, I support the process, and I know about it, because some of the council members reached out to me, and I support it. I'm going to trust that it works, I'm going to encourage people to come in with good spirits. I would like to ask Benson Wong to step down from the, the three council members, and ask Mike Cero to step into it. I think there are some diametrically opposed opinions there, and that's what we want. We want that diversity. So, Dan, I support the process, and I'm going to trust it, and I'm going to go with it, and I'm going to encourage others to do the same. I think there's a lot of facts and data that we need, and I'll give this to Ally to give to you later, but what I did want to do is read somebody's statement that, they asked me to read. And it said, "City Council, I could not attend the meeting tonight, so I asked Tom Acker to read this statement for me. I've reviewed the draft process for the stakeholder group to have input into the future development of the town center. I think it is a good process and creates a mechanism to make sure that voices of islanders are heard. I look forward to working with the council to make sure that the future development is consistent with a family-friendly aesthetic downtown, avoids school overcrowding or underfunding, and minimizes traffic inputs. Stephen Parkinson." And so, just now wrapping up, I do want to reemphasize, please include Heinz. I mean, it, I, I see and have heard people are lining up to file suit against the city. And I have friends that are attorneys, and I know that I have to ask them a couple times, "Are you charging me for this conversation when I'm doing business with them?" And it gets really expensive. So you've created an unnecessarily, unnecessarily larger liability by trying to give somebody favoritism. Thank you.
My name is Richard Cloppenberg, and I live at 8050 84th Avenue Southeast, down by the middle school. And I would like to remind everybody that's on the council, you have taken an oath to represent the people, and I don't think you are when you have part of the council standing up for the developers and, and you representing the rest of them, however that works. It should be transparent. And I don't think it is. I don't feel good about it. And, and the big comments that I have are about what all these new apartments will do. Has anybody done an impact statement on what it's going to do to the school systems? And I think you all know what we're talking about. How many apartments, somebody can do a study, lots of people can do this. Has a study been done? I'd like to look at it. Good mayor, answer the question.
We don't normally answer questions, but I will, what I will tell you is that at the last council meeting, council directed staff to look into the issue of impact mitigation fees, and that is on the agenda for the March 16th meeting, where staff will be coming back to the council.
Wonderful. My second question is about the traffic impact. Has anybody done anything about traffic?
Does the same issue, it's the impact.
Has a, has a study been done? What's it going to do? I mean, those things are available, you all have a liability. So, I'm not too sure, but anybody on the planning staff has any, planning schooling or has graduated from a city planning university, and where is it? So I don't think they're representing us well either. So, I will plan to attend the meeting on, what is it, March 16th? Okay, thank you.
Study session, six o'clock in the evening. It's a study session that begins at six o'clock in the evening, it's not at seven o'clock, just so you know.
Seven o'clock?
Six o'clock in the evening.
Okay. And that'll be on the 16th?
On the 16th. Anybody else? Okay, closed appearances. We're into the minutes, we got three sets of minutes before us tonight. First, regular meeting minutes of January 5th, 2015, if, get a motion to approve.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'd like to pull that. I guess we, go ahead.
I'm, I'm, go ahead and move. I move to approve the minutes of regular meeting, January 5th, special meeting, January 6th, and regular meeting, January 20th.
I think we have to do one at a time, Debbie.
Do, do we?
Yeah.
Okay. So then I'll start with the 5th, January 5th.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment.
You can propose, Mike.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment, it's on page four, it's on the, has to do with that state legislative priorities. And I'd like to amend, right after he does not support, council member Cero spoke about the legislative priorities, he does not support, period, and then add, specifically, he voiced strenuous disagreement in not making State Road 520 funding with the state gas tax a standalone priority, semicolon, state funding of local and regional transit service, semicolon, adjusting the property tax increases and the statewide price on carbon pollution.
So those were, Ally, do you have all that already? Is there a second to the motion? Okay, any discussion?
Again, I think it's the question, then, the extent to which the specific feedback of all other council members on the various items also be recorded? Are we looking for an equivalence, or is this just, you know, because you care clearly quite strongly?
Right, I understand, and that's a, our minutes are inconsistent, not a, I'm not being critical, but our, our minutes are inconsistent. Sometimes they do have narratives of council members, sometimes they don't, and I think you're aware of that. So, until we have a hard standard that we're going to abide by, according to Robert's rules, that only, only decisions are dictated, and we were very, we have a record of being very flexible in that which is included. And, and I'll just suggest, just to have, council member spoke about the legislative priorities he does not support hanging out there. I think we do a service to our citizens by elaborating a little bit on what the issues were that, that prompted me not to support the legislative priorities.
Okay, is any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? Anyone no?
No.
Okay. Motion passes 4-2, 4-2. Okay, 4-1-1.
I have an additional correction to this.
Jane said voted no, I think. Kate Jane, what else?
This is a Scribner error, in the paragraph about a third of the way up, Principal Planner-
Which page?
Same page, page four. Principal Planner Stier noted that there, this, the, the word "there" should be eliminated, it's just a grammatical thing.
I don't think we need a motion for that. Okay. Okay, all favor of proving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention, Joel abstained.
I move to approve the city council minutes of the special meeting on January 6th, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Motion passes 5-0 with one abstention.
I move to approve the city council minutes of the regular meeting, January 20th, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Joel abstains, 5-0-1. Oh, I should have also mentioned, it's going to be a couple changes in the agenda. AB 5035 has been struck from the agenda tonight, the King County Regional 2014 Hazard Mitigation Plan update, because the staff member who is going to present is unable to be here tonight. Agenda Bill 5040, the Community Engagement Plan will now be the first item under regular We're on the consent calendar, anyone need to pull anything off the consent calendar?
I had some questions on Set 2 and Set 3, which ones are those?
5041 and 5039.
This is on the APs, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're, are you on the APs or in the, so are we pulling, I know Benson, you wanted to pull off the 5039.
Right, correct.
And, okay, so 5039 is off. Did anyone need to pull off the payables or payroll?
Yeah, I had a couple questions on.
Okay, why don't you do your questions first?
Yeah, and on, on Set 2, page 8.
That's the March, the February 5th?
Pardon me, Mayor, Deputy Mayor.
Set 2 will be the-
Just a second.
We should, we should adopt the consent calendar and then start talking about the payables.
No, we can't adopt it until we get his questions answered.
You have to pull things off the consent calendar to discuss them, and then you adopt the, whatever's left on the consent calendar, and then those become the items of regular business.
Well, let me just ask a question, I sent these, I haven't been on my email for two hours, so is there any response to these?
Yes, yes.
Are they sitting in my email box?
I think, I think there was one question that we didn't respond to, related to the police training, that we still need a follow-up on, but otherwise you've got answers to your questions.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll move that we-
So let me just, but 5039 is off, does anyone need to pull 5041? Okay, so the consent calendar is now the payables, payroll, and Agenda Bill 5041. Do you want to move adoption, Mike?
I'd, I'll move to adopt it.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. So we're now at Agenda Bill 5039. Do we have staff here who's, okay, so why don't, so just, so we can get, let Ann get out of here at a decent hour tonight. Benson, I'll let you take this one as to questions.
Yeah, the question I have basically is, you know, this is a sizable construction project that is being bid, and I just frankly, I had some questions about it, questions about the, the bid responses and about the contractor, and in light of what's happened in some other recent construction projects, I just think it's important to make sure we understand what process we used as a city to review these bids, and, you know, and I think I talked to you a little bit earlier, Ann, and that was simply, I was just kind of amazed by the disparity in the bid, bid responses, and also I had questions about the fact that the, a bid that was approved was actually $90,000 below our engineer's estimate. So, if you can just sort of respond, I guess, to some of these questions regarding the process that the city undertook.
Sure.
Just that you can repeat the questions also, so everyone knows which you're responding to.
Okay. Ann Nellhau, Assistant City Engineer. And with me tonight is Rona Lynn, the Utilities Engineer, so this 2015 Water System Improvement Project is hers to, was hers to design, will be hers to manage through construction, but I'll do my best to answer some of the questions as raised by Councilmember Wong, and then Councilmember Cero also had a couple of questions that are somewhat related. So, I'm going to sort of read, based on the email I received. There was a question relating to the, the wide disparity in bids, sort of an explanation of why Earthworks' bid was lower than our engineer's estimate, whether or not Earthworks has done work for the city in the past, and then whether or not we felt that Earthworks has a large enough staff to be able to adequately complete the, this magnitude of construction in the, in the timeframe and on the, and within the budget that we have identified for this project. And I guess unequivocally, we are so ecstatic that Earthwork Enterprises is our contractor, is our low bid, low responsive, responsible bidder on this project. Earthworks has done projects for the city since I've been here, so we're talking 12, 13 years, and they've always been able to perform to the level that we expect. Projects are always on time, on budget, and unless there's an issue with an unknown, hence the reason why we have contingency, but if there's an issue with an unknown that we have no control over, that would be the only driving factor that might delay a project or cause it to go over budget. So knowing, so knowing that, when we design a project and when we prepare that project for advertisement, we, as engineers, will put together our best estimate, our engineer's estimate, of what we, as engineers, think the project will cost to construct. We're not contractors, and contractors work their own magic when they put their bids together. So they determine what they feel is an appropriate price to give to the city, which includes what it costs them for materials and labor, what they expect to get in return in terms of profit, and then whatever other means they can put together, depending on how hungry they are. If they're hungry and they want the job, they tend to be a little lower. If they're, if they have a lot of projects on their plate, and, and this would be gravy to them, so they bid it a little high, and if they get it, they get it, and it's wonderful. If they don't get it, it's not a big deal. That's sort of, that's, that's sort of the trend for the higher bids that you might see on a project. So, what we, what we got with this project, six bidders in a range that we felt was very good. As engineers, as the city, we never want to be the low bidder, we never want to be the contractor of record, that's just not what we're here to do. So, we really like our estimates to fall within the range of the low bid to the high bid. It tells us that the project that we've prepared is well-designed, that we've addressed the issues, that we haven't missed something, we haven't left something on the table. And so, with the bids that we've received, we felt really good about the spread that we, that was there. We've got Earthworks, who's lower than ours, Carvel, who's pretty darn close to the engineer's estimate, and then we've got some outliers on the high end, two contractors who've never done work on the island before, we don't know who they are, they really don't know the island, and so that could be why they put their project, they bid their project as high as they did. They were factoring in- They were factoring in some unknowns that only they can determine what those unknowns were, and they folded that into their bid to reflect that if they... You can presume that that was, that's to reflect that if they got the bid, they might make some money. If they got the bid, they are covering themselves for something that they may come across. So.
So Benson, has that answered your questions?
It does. I guess it's also, I think monitoring the contract that goes forward, I mean, I assume, I'm not sure if it's you or is it somebody else on staff?
It's Rona.
And so how diligent are we as part of monitoring these things? I mean, again, I just...
And I'll jump in here as well. We, you know, we take our contracts very seriously. They are, we are very diligent in monitoring each of the contracts that we manage. And, you know, I'll let you add, but that's something, that's one of our fundamental obligations as project managers for the city, is to monitor those contracts, do all we can to ensure they come on, come to completion on time and within budget.
So another piece that we're really excited about, and for those of you on council who've been here for a while, our Lakeline project, which turned out to be an absolutely awesome success, we have recently retained the construction inspector who worked for the contract manager, the construction contract manager on the Lakeline project. So he is now working for us as a Contract Capital Projects Inspector, and this work will be his to oversee in the field. So I expect really good things. There will be someone, Stu George is his name, he'll be on-site every day, so he'll be managing the field piece of it, and Rona will be managing the office activities, so.
Any other questions? Mike?
I think Jane's first.
Jane, go first.
Oh, yeah. My question is related to the water incident that we had, the E. coli water contamination problem. Will the replacements that we're doing, are they replacing some of the old cast iron pipes that we've had? And will the work that's being done help improve our system to the extent that we can say that we might be affecting the E. coli problem?
Every capital project that we do improves our water system, straight up.
Right.
No doubt about it. So this will be a good thing. I can't speak for 100% if, I don't think it's all cast iron that we're replacing. I think a bulk of it is smaller-sized asphalt, asbestos cement pipe, so...
It's getting bigger.
Yeah, so we're taking out AC pipe, we're putting in larger-sized pipe, and I believe on Island Crestway, there is a portion of cast iron. No...
Mostly.
So it's mostly AC in this particular go-around. What, just sort of in as an aside, one of the other projects that Rona's working on is the Water System Plant Update, and as part of that, we're working on a mechanism for being able to identify and sort of highlight those underlying cast iron mains, which is, because of the water event, have sort of risen to the top as sort of a higher level of scrutiny. So we're trying to figure out how, a way we can, we can work with that as well as the rest of the water system that needs to be replaced and get a better mechanism for prioritizing all of the pipe system that needs replacement.
Yeah, and I would just add, we're coming back on March 30th with an update on the work that's ongoing in response to the Boil Water Advisory. So we'll talk with you a little bit more at that point about what our consultant and our team have determined needs to be some work going into the future and what that looks like. As you know, we didn't find a cause. We know that the cast iron pipe potentially could have had some relationship to the E. coli, but, you know, we really never did find a cause. But it is something we need to take a look at.
I have in my head a vision of the cross-section of that section of old pipe that... Anyway, thank you.
Well, Councilmember Braun asked the question. I find it interesting with the E. coli that we had and the connection with our cast iron pipes that this project, which is a lot of money, doesn't replace any cast iron. That's not my question, though.
I wish we could do it all.
No, it's just a priority of things, as you know. The engineer estimate, do we have to do the engineer estimate? The engineer estimate that you get?
The question is, do we have to have an engineer's estimate?
That's exactly what the question, that's what it was.
Yes, we do have to have...
By law, by state law?
You know, I'd have, I can't answer that exactly if it's by state law, but it is definitely, it is definitely, what's the word I want? It's escaping me.
Ann, if it's not state, if it's not state law, if it's us...
Let Katie respond.
I don't know that for sure, but I can find out. But I would say that I think what Ann's trying to say is too, that that helps us understand what the, basically what the parameters are of the contract are gonna be, because it helps us design the project.
It helps us to be able to lay the groundwork and to identify for the council what the project will cost, whether it, you know, knowing, yes, that it's an estimate and there will be, there will be things that go up and down, but we need that as a basis to be able to judge whether the bid that we get from a contractor is balanced or not, is an acceptable bid, a responsible and reasonable bid or not. Because if we don't have that as a basis for the project as it's designed, we could get bids, we have no idea if they're unbalanced or not, and we could be spending monies unnecessarily.
Ann, I can sense the deputy mayor getting uptight because I must sound like a broken...
Because I've got a...
I must sound like a broken record to him. Once again, I'll play this broken record. I've not seen where an engineer estimate makes a difference, and I would like staff to think outside the box, because the engineer estimate costs money. I don't know, $10,000, $20,000, it's money. So the market determines what your cost will be. And it's the range of those. I've not seen staff ever come changing the direction that we do with a project based upon an engineer estimate that was way high, way low. The other question I have, Ann, is instead of being Earthwork Enterprises, and I'm very glad that it sounds like they're squared away, and also that they've got a foreman from the Seward Lake Line, that's very heartening also, but instead of Earthwork Enterprises, if it was Dum Dum Enterprises, how would you pass or tell, or recommend to the council to not accept Dum Dum Enterprises, the low bidder?
I will jump in on this one, because this is more the question of procedure relating to our bidding process, which is a very fair question, but it's not for this Agenda Bill. So I think if we want to have that and talk about that, I think the appropriate place to raise it, Mike, is at the June Planning Session and ask to be put on the work plan for the rest of the year, because we just had a work plan decision process in January. So, but all I want to say, we need to stick with this Agenda Bill and not get beyond that right now. So any other questions on this Agenda Bill?
Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this Agenda Bill?
You know, I think, and maybe to a certain extent, this is for the public, and I think, you know, everybody on the council, probably everybody in the community and everybody on staff, is incredibly sensitive to notable construction projects based on the experience that we're experiencing with the South End Fire Station. So I think that just heightens everybody's sensibilities, and I think to the point that Deputy Mayor Grous raised, it's probably one of those items that we would want to look at for the June Planning Session in terms of, do we really have a full understanding of what the bidding process is? I mean, for me, you know, one of the interesting metrics would be the extent to which historically we've actually come in, or the contractors come in, on time, on budget, which I think is Councilmember Wong's question, probably not too difficult. My gut reaction is that our contractors do pretty good, you know? Our staff does a good job bringing it under, but, you know, there's probably data and statistics there. So to that extent, I think it would be an interesting point for us to come up with and to look at in June to make sure that, you know, we have clear line of sight, clear methodology, perhaps some improvements that we could go forward with. But given the parameters that we have with regard to this Agenda Bill, it looks like, based on process and then based on reputation and experience, we're in a good place.
Okay. And I did notice the city manager has made a note on his pad of paper to put it on the June Planning Session Agenda.
It has been noted.
So it is there.
And if we can pull together some of the data about overall projects on time, on budget, we'll get that out earlier. It's my sense as well, I, you know, I haven't been here nearly as long as some of our team, but that the, you know, a very large majority of our projects are on time and under budget. So I think we have good news mostly to tell there.
Can I get in a motion on Agenda Bill 5039?
I move to award the 2015 Water System Improvements Project to Earthwork Enterprises in the amount of $1,582,001.25, set the total project budget at $2,398,035, and direct the city manager to execute the construction contract.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six, zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Rona. So as I've mentioned before, we're now moving on to Agenda Bill 5040. And my understanding, Kirsten, you're presenting on this one?
Good evening, council. For the record, Kirsten Taylor, your Assistant City Manager.
We're gonna come back.
At the January Planning Session, council asked staff to come back with a Community Engagement Plan, and we are doing that tonight. We actually have a team presenting. We will start with our general Community Engagement Plan and then move into specifics of our Town Center Visioning Strategy for Community Engagement. So with that, I'm actually gonna turn it over to Ross.
Thank you. Ross Freeman, City's Sustainability and Communications Manager. So tonight, I'm just gonna go through some of the highlights of what we've drafted over the last few weeks. And this is a process that we can use in a number of different settings for a number of planning processes that are coming up. And there are others that are not related to visioning, such as when we circle back on, say, library issues, this kind of engagement process could be used there, too. But to just start at the top of this, the high-level view, what we're trying to do is point people to this web address, and some of you have seen this now used in some of the most recent meetings, mercogov.org/counciltopics. And that is a place where we'll be the, we're visualizing that as the launching point to learn about the top items that council is addressing and anticipating engaging with the community on. Another component here, and you'll see these in a second, just trying to line it out for you, is an online calendar that is highlighting the meetings that are relevant to the most hot-button topics. If you look at the homepage of the city's website, there are lots and lots of things on the calendar, but to try to hone this down a bit for those people interested in where should they spend their limited time in significant meetings that address planning, there'll be a calendar that is just focusing on those issues. And then later tonight, we will be getting into how is this kind of engagement strategy going to apply to the Town Center process? So just to highlight this for council and for the audience and people watching at home or who watch this later archived online, this is the button there on the top right. That's where it will be living. It's circled in red. That's the city council current topics. If you click on that, currently, here's what you'll find. These are the six major areas where we have a lot of activity going on, a lot of future meetings coming up. A number of meetings have already occurred on these. These are big, long-term planning processes. And just for example, I'm gonna zoom in on one of them here, the Comp Plan Update. These are clickable buttons. This is what you find when you go down that trail. This is a draft version of a modified page showing how we're going to lay this out to have a consistent format that each webpage that we were linking from on the previous page, this is the kind of format that we'd like to work with to make it clear, graspable. For those who have limited time, there's an overview. Recent updates will show what's been happening in the most recent meetings. We think it's very important, for example, also to have a summary of comments. Some of these processes, we have launched online comment forums or have received comments at public meetings, and when we have those kind of comment opportunities, those will be posted on these pages so that people can download those summarized by theme, or if they'd like to read pages of, and pages and pages of verbatim comments, that's an opportunity as well. This is a mock-up. This is a draft version. You'll recognize this page, we just saw it a few slides ago, but this is what it's going to look like on the right-hand side. So you can click in, find out what the hot topics are for council and the community, and on the right-hand side will be all the meetings that are relevant to those topics. So this is kind of the one-stop shop to find out where you should spend your time, what's coming up next, when there will be an opportunity to weigh in. And the kinds of meetings that will show up on this calendar are listed on the left side there. Now, the kind of engagement formats we're intending to use from here forward in all of our public engagement processes are listed on the left. Stakeholder groups, steering committees, open houses, we've had a number of those recently, town hall-type meetings. As I mentioned, some of the issues now have live comment forums that have been receiving lots of attention, and there's always the opportunity to, of course, email or phone to the relevant staff. The kind of places where we'll promote these opportunities, and this is really important because, of course, we understand that not everybody is going to spend their time looking at the city website, and there are people who don't do computers at all. So, of course, it's the most bang for your buck is putting out this information on a website, and this is, of course, very common in municipal settings. You can reach a lot of people very easily, but for those people who aren't looking at the website or don't know to go there, we always want to be promoting this in the local newspaper, news releases from the city that are published by other institutions, direct email lists, there are opportunities to sign up for those. We're increasingly using social media outlets for our notification to the public of significant opportunities to weigh in, and some of you have heard me speak about this, but in particular, nextdoor.com is becoming a pretty major venue to proactively reach out with information about, let's say, the next meeting, the next comment opportunity, or a chance to weigh in on a survey. And now we have almost 2,000 households that are reachable that way. We have other social media outlets, too, of course. And then finally, one of the gentlemen commenting earlier mentioned this, but sometimes you can't beat a sandwich board, and there are folks that maybe that's the only way they notice these things, and that was very effective for the Boil Water incident. Of course, we rented some electronic boards and were even able to use the board over the freeway, which is a rare opportunity. But we do anticipate using sandwich boards more, and that was also really effective for the bus riders survey. Just having those six sandwich boards around the island generated over 600 comments from active bus riders, so very, very useful, very easy. We can always have flyers, and something to consider in the future is, there is, of course, a cost attached to this, but direct mail is one way that you know you're reaching every address. Whether people read it, that's a different question. Just to move on a little bit into a focus topic then of how we would use these opportunities, we're gonna have some discussion now on how this is going to apply to Town Center and flesh that out in a little bit more detail. I will just point out what we have here, this diagram we're referring to as the roadmap. And what we tried to do is lay out all the issues that are interlinked here in terms of long-term planning for the community. These are big, long-term decisions that have a lot of opportunity for public involvement and that council is facing significant decisions on. It also highlights some of the components that are underlying these in the historical record. For example, on the bottom left there, you'll see the previous visioning process for Town Center, the 1994 Citizen Visioning Process. So we will be trying to use this diagram as much as possible to remind people how all these components are interrelated, you know, Part One, and then Part Two at the bottom, where can you learn more? You know, for those who don't know, we have a weekly e-newsletter, for example. Great venue to learn about more of a city happenings, and other opportunities are lifted there as well. So with...
Good question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So when you look at the two main...
So when you look at the two main blocks, the town center visioning and transportation, there's four pieces under each of them respectively. Should we read anything into the different sizes of the different, or is that an aesthetic?
No, it's a great question. We've tried many different versions of this, and the sizes don't mean anything. It's really just to have it read easily and flow well. We've tried it with all the same sizes, but as you can tell, of course, there's a lot of text in some of those boxes and not in others. So don't read anything into the sizes of those boxes.
Okay, great.
And they could be moved around if council wishes.
Schedule study session.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be happy to oblige.
Can we change the font?
Yeah.
Let's move on.
Okay. So we will zoom in now on one of these issues, the town center visioning process, and just look at how we will be implementing a significant enhancement of the citizen engagement on this process and explain a little bit about where we're going next in the next six months.
Hi, I'm Allison Van Gorp. I'm the Administrative Services Manager in DSG. I'm going to walk you through the first part of this. All right. So this is our new diagram to map out community engagement for town center. It's kind of complex, so we're going to take it piece by piece. I'm going to talk about this first piece here, which is the community input process. We're planning a number of different ways for the community to engage in town center planning. First and foremost, we've got a number of opportunities for broad public input. We'll start this off with a series of meetings coming up here in the next few weeks to kind of kick off the project and orient the public to what's been done so far and where we're going with the visioning and planning process and the code update. And then there'll also be opportunities as we go forward. The first phase is drafting the code, and then there'll be a more formal review process as this moves through design commission, planning commission, and city council. And there'll be opportunities for public hearings at all those stages. We'll also have the city website. As Ross was mentioning, there'll be online comment forums when people can make comments at any time. And then we'll be convening to other groups for more in-depth and focused comment on town center planning. We'll have the town center liaison group and a stakeholder group. So the town center liaison group, which we've been calling TCLG, will be made up of three city council members, three design commissioners, and three planning commissioners. It'll meet regularly and work closely with staff and our consultant team, both in developing concepts, drafting code revisions, and making sure that we receive public input and on the public engagement process itself. And then we'll also have what we're calling the town center stakeholder group. It will be composed of around 40 members, and it's meant to be a cross-section of the community to bring in broad perspectives and opinions and people from all around the island. And as I was saying, we'll then also have opportunities for the community at large to get engaged throughout the process. We'll talk about that a little bit more at the end of the presentation, what the specific opportunities are and the timeline for that.
And so what's the criteria for the TCLG? The section of the TCLG?
Like I was saying, there's three council members, three design commissioners, and three planning commissioners.
The mayor has nominated people. We'll take that up during the board appointments.
I get the next part of the presentation. Scott Greenberg, your Development Services Group Director. So to help support the work of the groups that Allison had just mentioned, we will have, obviously, city staff and then also the consultant team that you're familiar with from your planning session, Seth Harry and Associates and 3MW, which is now called Three Square Blocks. They changed the name of their firm, but it's the same firm. And we'll be working with them to provide graphics and other handouts and information to help support the public engagement process. And then ultimately, one of the big pieces of technical work that they will be putting together is what we're calling a design charrette. It may not exactly be in that format, if you're familiar with that from other processes, but basically a group meeting of the town center liaison group and the stakeholder group on March 20th and 21st is the tentative dates for that meeting. We still have to work out much of the details of that, but that would be an opportunity where Seth and his team would be meeting with those two groups and going through various alternatives and sketches and designs, very similar to what they did in Phase One of this process. And you can see on the left side of the screen, that's one of the outcomes of something that they sketched up after several different meetings with the city council subcommittee on the town center. So similar idea, but broadened out to a bigger group. That consultant group with staff would then also draft the actual code revisions. So I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that the outcome of all of this effort is revised design guidelines for the town center. So that's the prize at the end of this process, is coming up with appropriate design guidelines. And that team will also help the city draft those design guidelines. The final piece of this is what I call the more formal process. This is the process that's required by law. And that involves, so you'll see the yellow caution sign, if you will, is the draft code. And that comes out of the public process, tentatively around June 16th is when we're expecting the draft code would be completed. And then that draft code goes through the typical formal public process, which would normally be the planning commission holding the required public hearing and making a recommendation to city council. I expect that council may want to hold your own public hearing. There may be more than one public hearing. There may be other public meetings in these processes. But that's the time when the town center liaison group and the stakeholder group sort of turn over that code amendment draft or proposal, turn that over to the planning commission and the city council for your work on it. The design commissions also included in here, and it's a circle instead of a rectangle, they don't have a formal role in this process, but they're the ones that would be implementing these design guidelines. So they really should have some involvement with reviewing the final code amendment as it's going forward. And we still have to determine exactly how that's going to work. Could be some joint meetings with the planning commission, could be some separate meetings. But the point is that the design commission will need to, or should, weigh in on the proposal since they're the ones that are going to need to understand and be able to use it. And then finally, the stop sign at the right side is the final code amendment will be adopted. Tentatively, we're thinking mid-August, but since council usually, you cancel your meeting in mid-August, it could be September, or it could be more time if needed to finalize things. Throughout this whole process, the blue line at the bottom shows community engagement opportunities. There will be multiple opportunities for public engagement and commenting in various types of venues. And the stakeholder group, while it will cease to have a formal role after the proposal goes forward for city council review in early June, but the stakeholder group would still be available to bounce ideas off of, or if they've heard something in the public, they could then promote some ideas during the formal public process. And then, of course...
When is that, Scott?
Pardon? When?
You just referenced that the stakeholder group ceases to have a formal review. Where on that in this week of...
Where does it change? Well, I'm on this graphic here. It just shows a solid green line and then changes to the dash green line. And that's just to show that the stakeholder group, once the draft code amendment is prepared, then it really becomes the, I guess it becomes the product, if you will, of the design commission, planning commission, and city council gets passed forward to them. But they would still be available, if needed, to check ideas with.
Can I ask a question? Scott, you know, on the blue line, can you, you just made a general comment that the public will be, have opportunities to be engaged. Can you actually be specific as far as the opportunities and how the public can be engaged during this entire process?
Sure. There are approximately eight or nine, I think, maybe more than that, town center liaison groups that are open to the public. Their stakeholder groups are open to the public. The design workshop is open to the public. I don't know yet. These are not necessarily public meetings in the traditional sense where there would be a podium and people be able to speak, but it would be more educational, and people who are not part of these groups can come and learn and listen. There were also, as Ross had talked about, would be online comment form that people could submit at. People can write in letters or emails to staff, and we could distribute those to these various groups. And then, of course, the formal public process with the planning commission and city council at the end.
Let me just supplement that a little bit, Scott, because if you look on page seven of Exhibit Two, there also, it talks about during the week of March 9th, there's going to be several actual public meetings and then the community outreach sessions that will, where the consultants and city staff will be going out to various groups that will be willing to schedule meetings during that week and basically go out and explain to those groups in detail what the proposals are and get public input. And then there's a follow-up meeting the week of April 27th, where we're going to have another opportunity for the public to see what the project looks like at that point and provide more input. So in addition to what Scott had mentioned, there are several, some very significant public meetings and sessions where the public can respond. Debbie, you have a question?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. I'll hold most of them until the end. But the one, the one comment that you made that I think we bear a fair amount of responsibility to clarify is the means by which the public can provide input during the town center liaison groups and the stakeholder groups, because as we've noted, they're public. But it can also be extremely frustrating to sit there and listen and not to be able to ask either clarifying question or make what is deemed to be pertinent points. So I don't have a specific answer as to how, but I think we need to make sure that there is the opportunity for the community to engage in some way, shape, and form in all public hearings, or to a certain extent, it... I'll just stop there. I think it's really important.
Okay.
Okay. Why don't you continue on, Scott?
Yep. So I already covered this piece here. Again, the formal process is there's a draft code recommended by the liaison group to the planning commission, which ultimately makes a formal recommendation to the city council, and then you have the final say. Covered that. And I think we also covered that, too. I believe that's it.
Okay. Any other staff on this one? Okay. So why don't we go to, well, just again, just so the, what we're looking at here is the primary document is, begins on page five of Exhibit Two and runs through page eight of Exhibit Two. The graphics are intended just to give you a picture of what those four pages are supposed to be, the process laid out in those four pages. So questions, Jane?
Yeah, a couple, well, questions about the locations of the meetings, and I'm wondering if any of the stakeholder group meetings could be held, like, in this room so that they could be televised? Just wondering.
Many things are possible. I think there's a cost. There's a cost to that, and also, we'd have to make sure that we had folks available to, you know, to be able to...
To keep media.
I think with 40 people, that would be really difficult, the way the cameras are set up to, you just, because you want to, you've got to have room for 40 people to sort of sit at round tables, or I think what's envisioned for the process. It's probably going to end up having to be up at the community center, is my guess for the stakeholder group meeting. The TCLG group, that's another point. I mean, we could talk about doing the TCLG meetings in this room and have the entire TCLG meeting sitting up at the dais, and that way, that could be televised. That might be...
It'd be nice if we could do, televise some of it.
Yeah, that might be an opportunity.
And I think, you know, building off that, if televised isn't, it doesn't work for logistics reasons, 40 people in this room, et cetera, then what I would take is making sure that there's the ability for people to understand the dialogue and outcomes of that meeting. So within that context, is there agreed note-taking minutes that will come out that are then published, I presume, to the website?
The idea is that the, one of the three consulting groups, the three square blocks, three blocks squared, or whatever it is, three square blocks, I think, they're experienced meeting organ, or meeting, they're experienced at just this type of activity, of running these kinds of public engagement meetings. And so we're going to be leaning very heavily on them to ensure that, first, it runs smoothly and that they have a process where people feel like they're participating, or not feel like, they're able to participate, and we're able to memorialize the outcomes with whiteboards or with minute-taking or whatever it takes. But we're going to rely upon them to really get us through this and ensure that we keep track of everything and have a successful process. Benson?
Kirsten, can you elaborate on the stakeholders group and how that is going to be, members are going to be selected?
Yes. The stakeholder group, the key point is that they, we're looking for a wide cross-section of the community. So we are going to look for people who live in the town center, people who live at the south end of the island, people who live east and west, looking for people who maybe have small children, people who have teenagers, seniors. So looking for people who come from kind of all walks of life, people who have diverse opinions about what the town center should be. We're not trying to get a homogenous viewpoint. We need to have a cross-section of viewpoints to be represented in that stakeholder group.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? And I think I'm a specific mouthpiece in this context, so I'm not going to take credit or blame perhaps for asking this. Because when you describe it, what you describe individuals, and when you look at the description, it also references groups. So one of the very, you know, straightforward and I think reasonable questions that's been asked is, when we identify an organization such as SOS, MIPA, Rotary, Youth and Family Services Board, how do we get representation from them? Are we identifying people within those organizations, or are we going to a leadership person or body within that organization and allowing them to nominate? So for example, in the context of the library work, we went to MIPA, and MIPA provided the name. How will we actually be drawing from organizations as opposed to named individuals?
Well, I think that's up to this council and to help us understand how you want that done. I would, my suggestion would be that you go to the organizations and have them let you know who they would like to represent that organization. That's one possibility. But if you have other ideas, that's, that's partly why we're here tonight, is to get this kind of input from you, because we don't have an answer to all these questions. We want to do this right, and we want to do it in a way that meets the needs of the council and the community, so help us get there.
I suspect that what we'll end up doing is asking people to apply for this like they apply for any group. And I fully expect we'll have more than 40 people who will indicate an interest, and then it'll be up to staff and the town center committee to, working with the rest of the liaison group, to narrow it down to a representative 40 people. And it's, yeah, what has been, will be made clear to everyone is that if they want to be on this, they are committing to seeing this through and attending all the meetings. There're not going to be a lot of stakeholder group meetings. I think we've got four definitely scheduled between now and May, and we'll get specific dates for those meetings. But one of the prerequisites... one of the prerequisites for being part of the group will be that a firm commitment to actually be at every meeting.
One of the important elements, then, I think is going to be to make it very clear on what basis or criteria people are then nominated for that board, because we referenced diversity. But the challenge there is, either it implies that we know, or we think we know who they are and what they represent, or we have some means of identification in the application process. And I think that could be very burdensome, and I'd also have some basic concerns about privacy there. So I would have to think about it. I don't have a strong recommendation right now in terms of how you then go ahead and ensure that there is that robust demographic diversity. I do think, though, that we should look at past precedent with regard to, you know, group representation and determine if that's the way we want to move forward. And to a certain extent, I would probably go with past practices unless there's some experience that leads us elsewhere that would say, go to the leadership of that organization and allow them to nominate. But again, I do think it's going to be very important so that it doesn't appear that council or staff or any organization is biased in the selection of individuals without having clear criteria established. This can be really important.
Mike, you had a question?
We've got a list of questions. If I can beg your all's patience, you know, on kind of the list of organizations you talked about, you know, I can, hopefully that's all-inclusive. I can think of Masons, VFW, Kiwanis, Probus, Women of Washington. So I hope that's not a complete list yet. And to Councilmember Burtland's point, we have a better understanding how we're going to pick these stakeholders. That was my last question. I answered first, just because you prompted it. So I'll go to my talk.
Sorry, you finished?
So I had a couple when I asked for it. So I saw this briefing as two parts, the Ross part and then the Scott part. So Ross, the big picture with public engagement and communicating with the public, two things that I'd ask that you consider including there, and I know other cities do, it's, and it sounds like we're getting a lot of public records requests, and I could just wonder how many of those public records requests are redundant. And if one person wants to know about a particular issue, there's probably many others on the, in the community. So I'd ask that you develop some sort of webpage that identifies what public records are being requested and then gives the rest of the community access to those public records. And I know there are cities that do that. Any, you look like you're unclear on that?
No, I'm clear on what you're saying. I was interested to hear how that works, from the city clerk's perspective.
In an ideal world, that sounds good.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, they're just PDFs, they're just a link. I mean, it's not too hard.
Oh, and I would add that there, we're also interested in having FAQ pages evolve on some of those topic areas as it becomes clear that the same kind of question keeps coming up.
Yeah, but I would, I would, there's a skepticism out there whenever we interpret. There's a value in just having the source documents. I think there's a need, desire, just to have the source documents without the, et cetera.
Yeah. Well, and certainly, I think we can, we can add links to resources as those are requested. I didn't highlight that on the, on the draft page, but at the bottom, we'll always have a resources section, and so that's where we can put direct links to the things people have been asking about, too.
Okay, great. And, you know, I kind of have a bad spreadsheet, and Ellie will attest to the quality of my spreadsheet, how many times I have to ask her for the information. But giving access to a way to cross-reference council meeting topics to where they are in the council meeting. Follow me?
I don't, I don't. Try me one more time.
So, for instance...
Well, you have it, Mike, you have it already on the agenda. The issue is on the minutes. We don't, we don't hyperlink the minutes, and that would take a...
No, it's just...
I mean, that's, that's something we would take a much bigger effort on behalf of staff to do that. But all the agendas are all hyperlink already, so you can go right to the...
Yeah, but you can't, you can't, you don't know what those agendas are. I'm saying, if we had a, if the, if our public had a list of agenda items that we've covered, you know, for the last five years, and they could go down there and look at what agenda item, and then what meeting that went to, that would give us access to the link that the deputy mayor is talking about.
But there is a, there is a search program, and I think the question is, you know, how, the problem you have with the search program is that it, you start pulling in a lot of other stuff besides your council meetings when you do a search. So, and that might be, it's, that, to me, is a worthwhile discussion to have. But ultimately, you have to rely upon your search programs to find this stuff, and, because you can't, otherwise, you're indexing 20 ways to Sunday.
We might want to look into that. I think there's a, I think Ellie has a tool that's readily available, and it's exactly what I'm talking about.
We can take a look.
Yeah. Okay. So, thanks, Ross. Now, Scott, I don't see on this list, especially on the timeline, I see some critical, and I know you can only get so detailed, but there are some critical nodes here, suspenses that we have, that may affect how you progress with things. One has to do with the moratorium that I guess started in February?
Goes to June 16th.
Right.
So it goes to June 16th. So are you tracking on here that we're going to, again, talk about the more, extending the moratorium and having another public hearing for the moratorium in June?
The idea, if I can change that, the idea was that the council will make a decision on June 1st as to where it's going. That, based upon what it's decided on June 1st, it could review the issue of extending the moratorium at the June 15th meeting, which is one day before the moratorium expires. Or it could act even on June 1st, if that is the direction. But what, what is not known and will not be known to June 1st is what exactly we're going to be doing. And that's because we haven't had any of this public process. But on June 1st, sometime between June 1st and June 15th, we're going to have to make a decision on whether or not to extend the moratorium.
Well, I think it would be prudent, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that if, we've got a lot of frustration in the public, and there's going to be some relevant code changes that are going to come out of this thorough process, that we would at least want to plan in our schedule for that moratorium extension.
Yeah, I have no objection personally to putting a placeholder on the June 15th agenda to consider the moratorium. And why don't we talk about that when we get to the planning schedule?
Can I ask a clarifying question? So if, in the event that we were to, that we wanted a moratorium to go longer, do we have to implement a new moratorium? Do we extend the existing? And if we extend the existing, is there the same kind of pause in effectiveness? Or do we go like the emergency route? Because basically, we, we voted to approve a moratorium on February 2nd based on the natural process that went into place on February 16th was de facto a two-week gray zone.
Correct.
So my question is, if this one expires on June 16th, do we have to accommodate in our planning, in our workback schedule, an additional two-week sort of gray period?
The gray period, yes. Yes, you would have to do that unless you went the emergency route.
Okay.
And the other thing to remember, too, is the same process has to be filed, followed, that you can do a six, up to a six-month moratorium, you have to have the public hearing. So you have to make sure you follow those steps again and make findings.
So if we were to wait for that vote or decision until the June, middle of June session, it would pretty much be an emergency and/or we would have a two-week gray period?
Right, or you can...
Or you could do it early.
Yeah, you could do it, you could do it as part of the June 1st meeting, if that's what we want to do.
Right.
Look, I was a little, I, I'm not finished, please. I was a little confused there. So the June 1st, so as not to have a gray period and have continuity of the moratorium, the June 1st would have to be on an emergency basis?
Now, the June 15th would have to be an emergency.
The June 15th, okay. And, you know, I would just, I was going to bring this up during the planning session, Mr. City Manager, but we'll have to get these things on the planning schedule. It's my recommendation that, yeah, it's included in the planning session, or the planning schedule. You know, I look at this schedule, and I'm kind of looking at the city manager on here, it is a tight schedule. There's a lot to get done here. I'm looking at you to say to the council, things are going to have to drop off the table. It's going to, for us to prioritize this, to make this happen, and do a good thorough job for our citizens, there are some things that are going to have to be pushed to the right. And we'll have to, I expect you to be very forthcoming.
Yes, if that becomes necessary, we'll be forthcoming about that. Right now, of course, we have some of the consultants who are going to help us with a lot of this process, so that, that does help alleviate some of the staff time. So I think right now, it is a very aggressive work schedule, but I think we can, we can get it done.
I look at this and I see, I think I see every single week, there's a big meeting, and sometimes there are two big meetings within a week. So, you know, Kirsten, you said this is the CBD. From the very beginning, I've said this is bigger than the CBD. I mean, this is development on the island that has to do with the comp plan and everything. There's development issues outside the CBD, that this is the time, since we're updating the comp plan, this is the time to address also. Maybe not as significant as within the CBD, but still, the development policies that we have, I feel, are changing the charming character of our neighborhoods, and this is the window that we need to address those things.
Let me just remind you, Mike, that we talked about that during planning session. What was agreed during planning session was that we would address what I think we referred to as a low-hanging fruit on residential density in 2015. And in 2016, the, we would then go into a much, would look at whether to do a much more comprehensive approach on residential density in the single-family zones. But the decision, not that we don't make decisions at the planning session, but the discussion we had at the planning session was that 2015, we'd handle what we, some certain, some changes that Scott had in mind and Katie had in mind that could address some of the residential density concerns that we, we know need to be looked at quickly.
Yeah, but we've, you're absolutely right. We don't make any decisions at the planning session. And things have changed since the planning session to where there's a lot of interest, and we've got a window of opportunity here while everybody's focused on what does the comp plan actually mean. And there's a connection between the CBD and outside. So we haven't made a decision on that, and I'm going to ask that, that we widen our evaluation. I mean, it goes hand in hand. The two are connected, that we widen our evaluation, not only to include the CBD, but outside the whole island, the whole island. The comp plan, which drives a code, deals with the whole island.
Any other questions?
That's all.
Debbie?
I'm sorry, Joel? I just wanted to make sure I'm not jumping in line.
Did you have any, Joel? You're the, no, okay, Debbie?
So I've got a couple of questions. The first one is, is that we're consistently referring to the town center, and yet, associated with town center is the issue of mitigation and impact fees. Mitigation and impact fees are also relevant in the multifamily zones around town center. So I think one of the questions I have, let's start with, you know, what I think is sort of the nugget, and the first one is the mitigation impact discussion. So as we've called out, there's a study session that is the middle of March?
March 16th, we're going to come back with the first part of that discussion.
Okay. And I think that's important, because, you know, that's one that is consistently coming up. It's, it's part of the comprehensive plan, et cetera. I think it's also going to be very important to dissect that conversation, because there's different elements of mitigation that are being discussed or being referenced in community conversations and also here within council and staff, one of them being school, and then the other one being utilities, et cetera, et cetera. Diving specifically into the concern that I think almost every Islander has, is pertaining to schools. And yet, that is one that council does not have primary or even perhaps exclusive jurisdiction over determining. That is one that the school board is inherently involved in, if I'm correct?
Well, actually, the, under the SEPA mitigation, as, as the operative SEPA official on proposed development, we work with the district, the superintendent and his staff, and have, and have previously developed the formula that's currently in place for SEPA mitigation fees related to potential new student population. We have recently started those discussions back again and are looking at different formulas and different ways of approaching that. So part of what you'll see, I think, when we come back on March 16th, will be probably with school district staff here, helping talk about where we might need to go to make sure the school needs are addressed as our, as our city changes, if it changes.
Great. So I didn't even ask a question, and I think you answered it, which is basically, how do we pull the appropriate organizations and individuals from the school district into the conversation? So that's super. The other one, there's, there's actually two more. The first one is, in general, great job. I know that you've been hearing a lot about the need and the passion around having a clearly documented engagement plan for some time. So huge kudos to the work that goes in here. I think clearly, it's been a lot of staff time and energy that's gone into it. To me, what I want to make clear, though, at least, is that the process doesn't end or stop in August. You know, that I think that if this diagram were to give somebody the impression that the interest or the passion or the opportunity for input ended with the end of summer, I think it would be very misleading. And I think what'll be important is, we start to build this out further, kind of recognizing this is the first unveiling, so to speak, is what the opportunities are to continue that engagement. Because given the short period of time, there's clearly tier-one set of issues that can be looked at. But there's going to be tier-two and potentially tier-three that come out through the course of what I think are probably some pretty healthy conversations, ideas that are generated, et cetera. And I would want to make sure that, you know, this is not a certain, you know, a sprint, we cross the finish line, we've amended our code, hallelujah, we're done for the next X years, or in the case that we've historically looked at, 20 to 25 some years, which was there for good reason. So let's, let's look at how we show a little more open-ended process here. The next piece that I would raise is related to that, and that is, I think it's going to be very important for us to understand what the actual scope of work is that we're looking at, because we're referencing town center development. Now, town center development can mean a lot of things to a lot of different people. I might say, I think all buildings need to be made out of cheese, you know, I don't know. Or all buildings should be stucco, or all buildings should be brick. You know, at what point, and where's the scope that's going to be at least roughly outlined when that group gets together, so that we don't worry about spending a huge amount of time on things that at least conceptually, we haven't considered to be a priority or burning? Because I can see that scope creep happening so understandably. But to maintain the level of discipline, I think it's going to be very critical for there to be consensus across these groups, what the scope is associated with this very short timeline and the community engagement component.
I want to raise one point that I think goes along with what Debbie and Mike have said. When you're doing the impact mitigation fee analysis, I would be curious whether that can be applied to new single-family as well. Because that's where we're still seeing a lot of the, we're still seeing a lot of growth on the island in new single-family. In fact, that's much more likely to have, you know, two, three kids than the one-bedroom apartments that are still the majority, the apartments that are being built. So I would want to make sure we don't miss that opportunity, if there is an opportunity there, to look at whether we need to be, whether we can do SEPA fees on one family. My guess is we cannot, but I'm curious whether we could do impact fees on, on one family, a single-family residential. And I don't know what the answer to that is.
I'll just give you, the short answer is yes, you can. But for impact fees. But that, that'll all be part of what we bring back to you on the 16th.
Okay.
It could, it would, potentially could apply across the board on all new development. But that's a council decision. We'll just give you the information.
Sure, that'd be, as long as we get the information. And I also want to thank the staff for working on this, and thank Jane and Benson, because the Town Center Committee worked very closely with, with staff on, on helping move this forward, and also reached out to various members of the community to make sure that we were on the right path. And I think I appreciate the involvement of everyone who was, was part of this process.
I'd just like to comment that I, I remember being at the 1994 Charette that resulted in the original... in the original town center plan, and I had never experienced this before, but it was a very interesting process, because in the room were the stakeholders, like 50 people, and all the experts that were brought in to answer questions, there were engineers, there were architects, there were city planners, there were lawyers who knew about development law, and so, as these different groups were working around tables, if a question came up, they could pull in the expert to answer the question. It was really a cool process, and I would like to, I mean, I would hope that when we do our process, there will be resources there so that we will have the information we need, because, you know, we all think we are traffic engineers, and we have all the answers, but we don't. And it is great to have all the resources we need to make a working meeting like that really productive, because the problem is, a lot of times, you get 10 people together, and you only have maybe 75% of the information you need to make any progress. So if we can get the experts there to answer questions, it would be very helpful.
Dan?
Benson, anything else?
Yeah, I just want to, again, echo my thanks to the staff, because it's been a short timeframe for you guys to generate this kind of materials. I think the important thing is that this is an interactive process, and it's just not one where people are going to be presenting information. I think we really want the public to be engaged and to provide information and feedback. The other thing is, I think one of the nice things, one of the byproducts of this, is that it provides a template for going forward, not just on the town center visioning, but on other major issues that confront the island. And so, you know, it shows what can be done as far as having an ongoing public engagement process, and so I think this is a good model that we can work from. It's not ideal, probably, but it's something that we can start with. But again, I want to make sure that the public realizes that it's an interactive process.
Okay, there's no motion provided for in the agenda bill, but I would entertain a motion to approve the February 19, 2015 draft of the Town Center Community Engagement Strategy. The motion, Joel has moved. Benson, a second to the motion?
I don't really have a problem with it, but I'm interested in...
Well, because we're setting up, we're setting up groups, and I'd like to have a formal council vote setting up the groups.
Let's see, what are we voting, we're just voting on...
The motion is to approve the February 19, 2015 draft of the Town Center Community Engagement Strategy, as included in Agenda Bill 5040.
Is there a separate, evidently, there's going to be a separate motion for the...
Right, that'll come under board appointments.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
And the actual makeup of the stakeholders group will...
That's set forth. The way that's done is to set forth in the strategy.
I would say, I mean, I will vote to support it, but I would say principally, as long as it's recognized that this is a living document, and it is not meant to be definitive, and, you know...
Yeah, no, I understand, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions, passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Do you want a five-minute break?
No, I only want...
Let's go, okay. Okay, so we're now back to Agenda Bill 5038. Who's got this one?
Night.
Mr. 5038 just walked in. Take it away, Dave.
All right. Evening, council. I'm here to talk about the Regional Animal Services...
Commander Jokinen, can you speak into the microphone?
Yep. Dave Jokinen, Operations Commander, and I am here tonight to talk about the Regional Animal Services ILA with King County. Over the past several months, 25 of the Regional Animal Services cities have been in discussions with the county to extend the current ILA before it expires at the end of this year. The extension would be for two years, covering 2016 and 2017. I'd be under the same terms and conditions of the current ILA, and all 25 cities have indicated that they're interested in extending the ILA. The current ILA was approved by the council in June of 2012, and went into effect in 2013. For 2013 and 2014, pet licensing revenue covered the cost of animal control services. The city didn't have to pay anything to the county. Estimates for 2015 show the same thing. Preliminary estimates for 2016 and 17 indicate the licensing revenue falls short of costs, and the city would have to pay $7,900 in 2016 and $9,900 in 2017. To address this shortfall, the city would look to participate in the county's licensing support program, and what the licensing support program does is it provides enhanced marketing tools to increase our licensing revenue. One of the concerns that was brought up back in 2012, when initially did this, was the condition of the regional animal shelter in Kent. This past week, I again toured the animal shelter, again found the shelter was clean, well-kept. Many of the dog kennels had recently been renovated, they have heated floors, branding doors, and keep the pets secure and warm. They're segregated, they appeared well cared for, and they have a big volunteer staff and shelter staff that are very engaged with the animals and take care of the animals. So, in summary, staff believes that the current ILA has provided Mercer Island with animal control services that reliably cover the city's needs, and has provided cost certainty with respect to usage over the past two years, and we also believe that it'll continue with the ILA extension. So, questions?
Any questions for Dave? Debbie?
I'm actually going to give credit to Mike for this, because it came up at the public safety meeting, and that is, you know, one of the, the external concerns is obviously the increased cost that we have, but while there's the opportunity to participate in a particular program that might help cover that, I think one of the key points out there is for the benefit of the pets, for the benefit of the pet guardians, that we encourage even greater licensing to go on. And if we have more cats and dogs registered, hopefully that helps covers the shortfall as well, and serves a good, strong social benefit at the same time.
Absolutely.
Benson?
You know, there's a reference in this ILA to the, and this gets to Councilmember Breitling's comments, I think. There is a comment regarding the participating or taking advantage of the county's licensing support program, so can you explain, we don't do that right now, is that correct?
We don't do that right now, because our costs are covered by our licensing revenues, so there's no need for us to right now to participate in that. But in looking at the shortfall, it makes sense to participate in that, and the county has been concentrating their resources on the cities that are falling more significantly shorter and have larger, you know, pet populations. But what that includes, as far as the enhanced revenues, is they do some things that we are going to start doing without even signing up. One of the things is putting out reminder calls to citizens, saying, hey, your license is due this month, you know, there'll be something coming for you in the mail, please, you know, fulfill your licensing and get that taken care of. Some other things are internet links on web pages. They're willing to come out, and like for summer celebration, and staff a booth, and hand out information and licensing information, and there's other, you know, they do canvassing, which is another option, which licensing support does. So there's a whole variety of different things that they're looking at to enhance revenue. New residents, send out packets to new residents that move into King County, saying, hey, here's what you can do to license your pet, you know, and the benefits of doing so.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go for it.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'd like to move that we authorize the city manager to sign the agreement to extend the inter-local agreement with King County for Regional Animal Control Services through December 31, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only discussion I have is, and I don't want to go down this rat hole, but if they're supplying warm floors for the animals, maybe they should get audited, but I'll vote for this, with somebody out there in the public to latch on to that comment. Mamma mia, all right.
I, never, I'm not going to go there. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Extentions, motion carries 6-0. That concludes regular business.
Thank you, council.
Councilmember absences. Anyone want to give Bruce a pass?
I move to excuse Mayor Bassett.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Extentions, motion carries 6-0. Are there any absences coming up that are not already known? Hearing none. Planning schedule?
Oh yeah, just a couple of things to note, as we've, as you know, we will be coming back to you with the fire union contract, and I'll work with our staff to get that set for one of the next two meetings. We're also likely to add an executive session at either the March 2nd or 16th meeting, and we'll let you know what time that's going to start. Depending on what we do with the TBD, it'll either come at the beginning or the end, but we'll, as you've directed, try and get it at the beginning if we can.
You know, I'd also like to just double-tap this one more time. There's a lot of, for this community engagement process to happen, there are multiple meetings that are required on our planning session, that I'd ask that you get those, populate that as soon as possible. And to include the moratorium, the two meetings with the moratorium, and also whether we're going to, whether it requires council involvement, if we're going to extend the comp plan date to the right.
Yes, I'll definitely get the moratorium on, and we're still looking at those comp plan questions, and we'll look at what we need to do there as well.
There's another thing on March 2nd, if we're going to deal with it. There's, Sound Cities is going to be talking at their March 12th meeting, I think it is, or March 11th, about a new county homeless strategy. And the strategy includes several specific measures they're asking cities to implement, some of which might be controversial. For example, getting rid of bans on letting people sleep in parks is one of them, and Redmond has already said that they don't agree, they do not agree with that. But I received today a list of the various city actions that are part of this homeless strategy. I will circulate that to the council and the staff, but we may need a few minutes at the March 2nd meeting, if I'm, if you're going to give me feedback on that, on what position to take. So I'll get that out as soon as I can, just to let you know that's coming up.
I think I would, I would, maybe I'm channeling Tana at this point, and that is, looking at March 2nd, do we have a realistic assessment of the amount of time for each of these items? The public hearing on town center development moratorium, I think we can well anticipate going significantly longer than 60 minutes. I'm not sure that necessarily changes anything, but I think we should, you know, indicate that we recognize and let the public know we recognize that it will probably be a heavy input evening.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Planning schedule, board appointments. We have one set of board appointments, the new town center liaison group from the mayor. It's the yellow sheet that's in front of you.
Question, have all these people agreed to do it?
Yes, Scott has, Scott has cleared it with everyone. The Planning Commission and Design Commission, actually, those were recommendations originally from staff. The, on the Planning Commission, we wanted to give the chairs of both commissions an opportunity to participate, but John Friedman could not, wasn't able to commit to the schedule for this, so that's why he's not part of the Planning Commission group.
You know, why wasn't David McCann considered, or was he considered in the Planning Commission?
I think, again, this was based upon experience and staff's review of which people they thought would be the best for this particular type of committee.
You know, I worry that we're as diverse, that this makeup is as diverse as we can to have a good discussion of different perspectives on this very important, this very important group. I mean, we all bring forward a record that shows in which direction we're likely to head, and I don't know all of these folks, but I know a lot of them, and I think that, you know, I had John Friedman down here as a true middle-of-the-roader, I'm, it's unfortunate that he's not on there. You know, I see, I see really Steve Marshall, because John's not on there, I really see Steve Marshall as the only one who really will have a healthy skeptical opinion, perspective on the direction that the comp plan and the review of this whole thing will be.
I disagree. I mean, I know, I know other people on the list that I think have the kind of healthy skepticism you're looking for.
Well, I mean, you know, the council, nothing personal, council member, brethren, colleagues, et cetera, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, that all the council is, they, all the council on this list voted for the legacy development agreement, and voted for the moratorium in its present state, which identifies a particular perspective. You know, the Planning Commission, I don't know Craig that well, but one of them is a CBD property owner that we know has a very strong interest in selling that piece of property, and there may be a conflict of interest there. Design Commission, you know, again, there's nothing wrong with looking at records. On the Design Commission, all the Design Commission approve the height variance, which is kind of counter to many of the, many of the issues that we have here, approve the height variance on the 2960, 2670, 76th Avenue, Southeast 18th Unit, multifamily. And, you know, it just kind of gives a feel, that's the majority of folks, or that's a strong majority of where this group will go, and we know that it's very, very important to have a good diverse set of opinions on, to set a good groundwork going forward.
I'd like to point out that the Design Commission, they were working with the current guidelines. They had no choice but to approve the projects that came forward under their purview if they indeed followed the code.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Braun, you don't know what you speak of. I was at that meeting, and it was, I'm not saying there was anything illegal, nothing illegal. I'm not saying there was anything illegal. I'm just saying, it is a foreshadowing of their perspective in the development and the promotion of development without what I would think is the correct deference to the cost, to neighbors, and the rest of the community. So I was, I happened to, I happened to be at that meeting, so I know exactly what I'm speaking of. So...
Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the appointments to the Town Center Liaison Group. Sorry, I move to affirm, perhaps I should remove, not make the motion, because I'm one of the named people, or does it matter?
Doesn't matter.
All right, I affirm, I move to affirm the appointments of Deputy Mayor Dan Grous, council members Benson, Wong, and Jane Brom, Planning Commissioners Suzanne Scone, Steve Marshall, and Craig Olson, and Design Commissioners Rich Erwin, Laura Sanderson, and Colin Brant to the Town Center Liaison Group, TCLG.
Second.
I'd like to make an amendment.
Sure.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'd like to change Suzanne Scone with David McCann.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, the motion fails for lack of a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-1. Motion carries five one. Seeing the board appointments, council member reports. Jane?
Yes. Couple of us were present on February 9th in the rain at the unveiling of the Loco at Farmer's New World Life. They're the biggest employer on the island and so they, I think they were very pleased to have some folks there with umbrellas. The February 11th giving for the Heart Breakfast, lots of you were there, it was hugely successful and I think it was probably one of the most smoothly run and certainly on time breakfast that they've ever had. Terry Potmeier and Dean Quigley, co-chairs, brought a historic perspective on the event and they made $160,000, probably more than that by now, but it was a record. The arts council meeting on February 11th, the Mostly Music in the Park group reviewed 60 bands for consideration for Mostly Music in the Park. They put out a call and got 60 bands that wanted to be, it was almost overkill, too much. But they're also going to be presenting Russian Chamber Orchestra concert in Luther Burbank Park this summer as well. And the new gallery show is starting February 23rd. And the art show income for 2014, the, the city gets 25% I think of the sales of art in the art gallery in the community center. And they made $7,000 last year, so. Parks and Rec Committee, Debbie and I attended on February 19th, and I forgot my notes about that, but we will be hearing more about the dock replacement down at Groveland. It's not happy, it's very expensive, and we'll be getting proposals for it, not, not only an in-kind replacement of a raised dock, but also a floating dock, consideration of a floating dock, which would be considerably cheaper and allow us to spend some money on shoreline mitigation as well. And Debbie, I'll let you tell about the rest, since I don't have my notes. Oh, no, I do have my notes. I learned what a pump track is because there was a discussion of a proposal for a pump track in one of the parks. It's kind of like a dirt bike track for children and adults. And then we heard about another big master planning process, the, the community center. Jana is going to bring forth quite a, a, a big process to get community input on the future of the community center and what, now that it's, what, 10 years old, how it's working and what, how we can improve the community center. So, that's it.
Well, I'm impressed by Councilmember Braun. She not only was able to hit that farmer's ceremony, and how she did that, I don't know. But she also got to the ill-fated solicitation court hearing. Man, she is a superwoman or something. Sorry about that. You know, I asked that the council, I think I sent it to the council or maybe just to you, Redmond, the Redmond site has some, a fascinating access to the data that that city runs, how it runs, receipts, APs, ARs, et cetera, et cetera. I even had a couple of the skeptics that we are very familiar with of the city council, had them review it, and they were very, very impressed, so. Well, remember Bruce entertained at the last planning session to see the data of, to give our citizens access to data? And we were, it seemed like it was more work and obviously my question or critique of it was that it's going through an extra level of bureaucracy and analysis. The city of Redmond seems to have broken the code to where it's boom, it's just the real data, the real information of money. I mean, you got to follow, you follow the money, you know, it shows all the receipts, all the expenses, all the visa transactions. You do filters and you can sort and probably download, I didn't get to that much. But like I said, there were a couple skeptics in the community, one that, and I won't name any names, and I had them take a look at it and they were just very impressed with it, so.
Is it the same system or a different system?
Different system, different system. But like I say, it's, it's something that you don't want to be the leader in, but it's good to be a close follower. Redmond seems to have broken the code. And I'm going to put this, my next issue is, is kind of in other business. I don't know where else to put it in our, in our, so, you know, I'm curious and I would like to know if with the city manager, the DSG director, or the council leadership, if there's been any agreements with Hines or quid pro quos, I would like to know about them. And a negative report, I would appreciate if, if that's the case. Okay? That's all I have.
I can tell you, there's no, there's definitely no agreements for the leadership of the city council and, and they're, if, if staff was doing anything, I'm sure they would have told Bruce and me and the council for that matter that, I mean, our staff doesn't make secret deals with anybody, so there's no.
Okay, I just, I just want to ensure there's no things that would affect the vesting of the Hines with agreements or of the such, and a negative report will be appreciated.
No, the, again, the only thing that there is, is that letter that we received at, prior to the last council meeting with the 15, their willingness to provide us with 15 days' notice. And that was, I will acknowledge that that's a letter that I actively solicited from them, but that's, if you want to call that an agreement, I guess, but that's.
Yeah, the only, the only other thing is, we, we did have discussions with them about potentially including parking in their development, but it, it hasn't culminated in any kind of agreement at all. So we did have a series of meetings and discussions with them, which preceded the moratorium.
Yeah, that's, you've made that clear to council along.
That's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, Jane did a great job covering the Parks and Rec discussion. Yeah, the pump track, that was interesting. The thing that, that I extrapolate from that is that there's a lot of interest in the island in terms of different bicycle-type facilities, BMX, downhill, pump tracks, I mean, things that I don't, honestly, I'd never heard of. So the request to staff was to look at the extent to which these could be common user groups and understand what type of facility this it is that they want, so that when we do it, we're not doing it piecemeal, but actually looking at the potential to respond to community interest while at the same time recognizing that there could be impact on either open space or parks, that, that people would want the opportunity to, to provide feedback on. The other part that I would call out is, is, you know, we obviously have had some great weather and I had the chance to spend some time down at Luther Burbank and in particular at the playground there. And every time I go there, obviously I'm a huge advocate, I'm just so impressed with that facility and the fact that we have an accessible playground and it is always busy. And people, you know, they will sit down next to you who don't know you and say, this is an amazing place. So I think there's really big kudos to, you know, the individuals who are involved, the organizations, city staff and everything, because I think that's just a, an incredible asset that we have on the island that very well reflects our values. We had a public safety meeting, but I think we actually were going to be addressing some of what we covered tonight, one was the hazard mitigation. Mike, you probably have better.
Thank you so much about asking.
Why, why don't you go ahead and comment on that?
So that is a do-out, and thank you so much, Councilmember Braun. So we need to get scheduled, I thought the agreement was at that public safety that we would have a public safety police-only meeting within a month of that last one.
It'll be scheduled by the end of March, 40th of March.
Six weeks.
Okay, and then, I think that's also something that needs to come before the council.
The hazard mitigation plan, yes, it'll be a Monday next.
Not the hazard mitigation plan, just crime in general and a, a report to the council.
Yeah, I think, my understanding is that the planning session, there was an agreement to do, I think it was discussed as an annual report from police on that, and so we will be scheduling that. I don't think we picked a date yet.
To echo Mike's comments, I mean, obviously, there was a lot of very intense and very legitimate concern in the community, given the spate of burglaries that we'd had and very consistent profiles. Hopefully, through the great work of residents and the police, there's been progress there. The extent to which you can, maybe at the next council meeting, we could just either via UNOL or via police chief, just get a little bit of an update, because I know it's one that, there's a huge amount of interest out there. And, and like I said, I thought it was very interesting that the person was found potentially on the basis of the person having the tracking functionality on on their iPad. And note to public, that's a really great way to keep track of where your device goes.
I almost wanted to send a article to Danny Westnutt. What's the guy's name?
Westnutt.
Westnutt. Tell him, well, our police will follow that thing and they'll do something about it, unlike the SPD. But that might be too, that might be too personal though, chief.
I also got a fear, I got a fear that any islander who owns a white van has probably gone out and got it painted by now.
That's right. But significant arrests, I mean, yeah, go MIPD.
Well, don't forget on, what is it, February 26th is a training for paws on patrol, and so if you're a dog, if you have a dog and you go out on walks, you can, oh, anyway, there is a training for people who can become additional eyes for the, for the police department. I have to, I'm going to hand this out, and so next month I start on the King County Regional Quality, Water Quality Committee as an alternate for SEA. And so as part of my orientation, I went to the Brenton wastewater treatment and it was a fascinating thing. Took a grand tour, was there for three hours and one takeaway is that our, our waste is not wasted. And so there is, there is, there is a program, there isn't, which you, you have some information about this program. Save the Waste, it's the bio solids recycling program. And so it's, it's basically, it's fascinating, they are recycling wastewater as fertilizer, yeah, fertilizer and soil conditioner and they're selling it. And so there it is. And so, anyway, it was a fascinating project and it's certainly, that treatment plant serves Mercer Island, so that's it.
You know, there used, there used to be a, a sign right next to the recycling center that the, that they were putting down waste, human waste in the, in the garden right behind the recycling center. So you're, we have a, I think the sign is gone, but.
And any, any human waste there now is unauthorized.
So the, I was at a few meetings, the, I'm on the, through Sound Cities, I'm on the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency Air Quality Advisory Committee, which they had their first meeting that I attended a couple of weeks ago. Nothing specifically to report, other than it's a, an interesting group of, call it stakeholders if you want, just representatives of different, of the unions, of businesses, of governments, and, and I represent Sound Cities and it's just to keep us up to date on, on air quality, things that are going on, most of which do not specifically involve Mercer Island, but it's still fascinating. We also had the Sound Cities PIC meeting a couple of weeks ago now, and as I said, the one thing that came out of that was the, this homeless strategy that we're going to have to talk about at the March 2nd meeting. And finally, we had a library board meeting today, which Kirsten and I were at. And Gary Wazden, who's the new KCLS director, was at the meeting and talked about where they're heading on this thing. Most important thing to know at the present is that they are going to put together a survey, which they're going to send out through their contact list and the city will try to get out through our contact list, but the idea is to solicit input from as many islanders as possible on, on questions as to what should happen with the library renovation. We're not exactly sure what the questions are going to look like yet, because we should see them actually in a couple of days. I'll make sure that everyone here gets a copy of it as well. The, the idea is for the library board to review the questions together with Kirsten and get back to Gary with any comments we have, hopefully in a week, and then the survey will go out. Once the survey has been tallied, then there'll be a more public meetings and, and more proposals, presumably some proposals by KCLS. It's a little bit sketchy exactly how the process is going to work after the, the survey, but Gary is, seems very interested in, in making sure that he gets a lot of community input and seem very solicitous of, of the community, so it's good to see.
How are they going to distribute the survey?
Well, they have their own mailing list, they have their own email list of, of KCLS cardholders from Mercer Island, so I think they're going to use that. So that'll, I think if, that'll get to the, the key group, the key demographic of library users. So, and then we'll try to supplement that to some extent.
Dan, what's the status on the library board members' replacement for, for anything for Joel?
The, the mayor, there's been six applications received for the vacant position. The mayor has got to make a nomination. Whether he does it at the March 2nd meeting or the March 16th meeting, I don't know, it depends what he's inclined to do. Anything else? Oh, we've got to go to executive session. Ah, shoot, I can't gavel.
Let's work for 15 minutes.
15 minutes?
Yeah, I think I.
Let's get it done.
We'll get it done.
Okay, so we're, we're going to executive session to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions, or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation, or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency pursuant to RCW 42-30-1101 in per en, small i in per en, for approximately 15 minutes, which I probably just used up half of that. I probably just used up half of that.